Denise, yep, got us on. Okay. We're gonna go ahead and open up our regular session for September 20th, 2017. At this time, everyone could please do their silence or turn off their cell phones and then join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Denise, let's see if we have a handful of changes. Can I go over those?
I do. So, for additions, we have Mr. Carreras' JCPD enhancement grant, the WDA positions that we brought up yesterday for conversation, the veterans transportation grant carried over from yesterday, the security camera policy update with possible action consideration, and the JCPD workforce contribution also from Jake. We're gonna delete the Pan-Event Plan update and Turner lease recommendation.
Great. Okay. Well, it's 10:00 a.m. and I'll call for any public comment at this time. Hearing none, we'll start right down the list. I would suggest to the board, if our district attorney and our community corrections director become available at some point, since we have monitoring items, that we won't interrupt the discussion that's going on, but we'll put them on so that they can get back to their business. So, first up is county property purchase request, 42nd group, action and consideration. And I quite did a discussion on this yesterday. Mr. Picard, welcome again.
Thank you.
Did you have anything else you wanted to share with the board this morning?
No, I don't think I would be comfortable with that, right? I would like to suggest, as opposed to a straight decline, that would be tabled. I mean, I heard a lot of feedback, and I'd like to start addressing some of that. I think it'd be easier to do if it's tabled and it still has a possibility, then it's worthwhile to address some of the community feedback. But as a straight decline, I think it makes it a little harder to start addressing community feedback. So, that's the only reason I have to say.
Okay. It'll be up to the board as to how we handle that. I don't know if we're gonna get a motion to approve your request or not, or I don't think we would necessarily get a motion to not approve it, but...
Just going with the same word, because at least two of the votes seemed to be pretty clear yesterday.
Yes.
Unless you guys change your mind.
Yeah.
Personally, I'd like more information myself.
And what vein, Commissioner? What kind of information?
On education. You brought up education.
Right.
And I'd like to investigate that more.
Yeah, and, you know, if you ever put in how to do that, we look to.
Crime litigation. Yeah. No guarantee of what the [inaudible].
Absolutely.
Okay, so, for the record, Eric Sorensen has sent an email in opposition. Dan Henderson has submitted a letter in support. Teresa Decker has sent another email to me in opposition. I received a phone call from Jan Hovel in opposition, and I believe that covers...
I had a couple to add. Heidi Albertson left a message on my phone in opposition, as did Bill Berry. All the rest are from yesterday's.
And Frankie is here with interest.
Yep.
So, we had public comment, Frankie, at 10:00, but we also, we discussed this quite a bit, the 42nd group proposal. We're about to do some type of action or inaction here, but since you joined us, and I don't think anybody else in the audience had anything else to add, but we would allow you to, if you have something you want to say.
Sure. I'm the only one that came in?
Well, there were several yesterday, yeah.
Oh, okay. So, we did have some.
Yes.
Okay. My concern about this whole situation is, for so many years, we've been struggling with druggies, okay? And then, and then we have this building that's built one block away from the Head Start, okay? And then they're asking to expand that again, okay? I don't even know for sure whether that's even for sure that it's been approved. For so many years, we've been fighting to control the drugs and everything, and then it ended up that it came to our county, okay? My concern on this is that, I live in a ci-- I live in a town that we have a lot of problems with druggies. I'm really going to my limit with these guys, and then it's just like my back door. I feel that if we, if, if anybody wants to get this project or this business going, I just don't feel that it should be in our county, you know? I mean, it's, it's not something that we need for our community. And I don't know how many people have spoken out about this situation, and I'm sorry that I did not approach this earlier. My job is so demanding, and, you know, and I just caught this in the big tail end. That's why I left a message with whoever I can get a hold of.
Okay.
Okay. So, if you guys are wanting my concern about this whole situation, I really don't feel that it is the proper way to have that stuff around our area. I mean, we've been fighting years and years with all these, these druggies that we are trying to control, and by having this business in there, we're not controlling it. Ninety percent, I'll bet you, the, the, the prisoners that we have in our jailhouse are probably a bunch of druggies. And, you know, I have helped a lot of them, but there's gonna be some point where I'm, I'm kind of losing it, and I'm not gonna have that control. And I'm just asking you guys your help and make that decision that they don't pass this stuff.
So, Frankie, if you don't mind, I'm gonna ask you a question.
Uh-huh.
Because we want to get on the same page on what your concern is.
Okay.
What do you think we're about to do or not do here? What, what do you think the Board of Commissioners and the county do? And before you answer that, just a little bit of background, you were talking about something about numbers or whatever, how many needed. The, the numbers speak for themselves. In the county vote, in the general election last year, we talked about this yesterday, 62% of our residents told us as the Board of Commissioners, they did not want any of these activities. The message, as I said yesterday, was very clear to me. The separation is that the incorporated communities had a right to do their own thing. The town of Lakeview chose through a board action, through a council action, to allow it. They didn't put it up for a vote of the people, which typically, as boards, we don't, but we thought this was important enough that the Board of Commissioners did. We put it out to the people. But I went back and looked at the 19 precincts that voted in Lake County, and of those 19 precincts, not one precinct approved of it. And then if you break it down into the town of Lakeview, because the city of Hazlewood did the same thing, just for the record.
Okay.
And if you break it down into the precincts that represent the town of Lakeview, there's five of them. Fifty-eight percent of the folks voted in opposition, even though the town by ordinance was, or by action, was going to allow it. So, what's before us today is not the merits of marijuana and all of that, but whether or not a piece of county property, we're willing to sell that to the 42nd group. That, that's what's before us.
Okay.
As Lauren said, Lauren Picard, representing the 42nd group, at least two board members yesterday were very clear that we weren't interested in selling it.
Sweet.
Commissioner Castner can speak for himself, but he just said he needed more information.
I believe in education.
Okay.
So, that's where we're at.
And the other aspect, we already have a facility as permitted by the town, and what they're looking at is two acres expansion. It's not gonna change the existing facility.
Okay.
And they're not gonna sell it locally soon.
No.
They'll be transporting to Portland, Salem, Eugene, Ashland, whatever place.
Okay. I'm just, you know, like I said, you know, I've been here many years. I know what we deal with, and having this, this crap, you know, running around here, I just, I just don't like it.
Yeah.
It's not good for our community. It's not good for our kids. I mean, I've dealt with a lot of these druggies impatiently, but some of them are going out of control that I can't help allow them. And I just feel that it's not right.
Well, I think it's very clear that you're opposed to this Board of Commissioners selling that two-acre piece of property to the 42nd group.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to deny the sale of the property to the 42nd group, and I'll vibrate more. I'll give them a second to discuss.
I'll second it. So, discussion.
As stated yesterday, the voice of the people is very clear to us as Commissioners. The other thing with marijuana right now, it is legal in Oregon. It's still federally illegal. And where it's federally illegal, we are also in a position to uphold the laws. And so, I think it's sort of a slippery slope whenever somebody comes to you and is proposing to grow marijuana on a piece of county property that would become yours. When we sell property, we have to follow all state, local ordinance and federal laws. And so, if we were to sell this piece of property and legal counsel was not here, I wish he was, I would say that we're probably in probably a pretty gray area of federal law. And with that, and with what has come to us from the public, that is the reason why my motion is to deny it. To deny it doesn't mean that it can't come back before us at a different request or anything, as Mr. Picard asked us to table it. They, they can always come back. We don't put a limit on anything like that. But that's where my motion, where I'm coming from, agrees with my made motion.
Okay.
And I'll state that I've always been on the books as being a pro-medical, and I'm not opposed to any adventure after work going on with recreation. Do we have a concern with kids? But we have it out there already. There's even stories of people selling marijuana out the back door of their businesses to kids, and so, we haven't planned down on that yet. But I also believe it need be a lot more education on the uses for the kids. But when it comes down to, when I take an oath, the oath is to maintain the, the laws of the United States and Oregon. Of course, those are conflicting laws, but the United States law prevails.
Okay. Any other? Hearing that all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Yes. Lauren, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your presentation yesterday.
And I appreciate the time yesterday and giving you back the book.
Yeah. And your professionalism, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
And continuing on the education, there's a lot out there, except for marijuana, that the average person is unaware of.
Right. And I'll reach out to you and get more of your advice, but I appreciate it. Thank you, President.
Okay. Can I be?
No.
I just wanted to set my point.
Okay.
Frankie, will you sign in before you?
I did.
Okay.
Thanks, Frankie. Thanks, guys. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna go right on, because they're all here, to the town of Lakeview annexation request.
And why is legal counsel not here, Denise?
He is in court.
So, he got busted.
I don't. I didn't ask.
So, just for record, yesterday, I had mentioned that I may have a conflict of interest. I clarified that with our legal counsel, where that this potential, potential annexation is for a lot of people, not just me individually, it is not a conflict. And so, I'm able to participate in the vote.
Well, can you expand on your conversation? So, all information, I have the same information, which we don't always, but that is one rule. Can you expand on the compensation with the legal counsel? It does sound wondering about if it affects you financially, if you's annexed in or not annexed in, the steel financial.
There, there, the, the fair would be is if you're financially gained or financially harmed, it goes both ways. I asked that question in particular, and where that, there was, yesterday within the meeting, it was said that they could annex everybody in, or they may not. There's 25% of all this. I'm a, a group of every landowner in there. It's not about me individually, so, he said that I'm still able to participate.
Yeah, clarification, sort of, right.
And we have the town's legal. We don't... Do you have a problem with me participating?
I do not. That isn't accurate. The conflict of interest rules are when it's a personal issue alone. If he was a sole property owner, he could not. But with the class of people, as he talks about, that are all gonna be equally impacted. Again, unless there was something special where there was gonna be a specialized impact, I don't see that as a problem. But again, I can't give you guys legal advice. I do not represent you with that. As far as my relation concerned, I do not have a problem with making the decision.
Just one clarification on...
So, in looking at it, in our wild and crazy day we all had yesterday, didn't get to spend as much time as I'd like to, but I, it seemed to be a lot clearer to me, the Lakeview Solar and the Red Rock projects. Those two seem pretty straightforward. Those have been discussed with those companies, the impacts, et cetera, et cetera, as opposed to the center part between Roberta and S Street. I'm still a little unclear as to how all this works. You know, I've heard people buy property and sign at the title company and embed it in there as a unequivocal consent to annexation. I, I don't know all that, but...
It's a different process for you guys, because you're not a municipality, but generally, there's kind of three different ways it works. It can be done by election. That's way more complicated than what we want to get into. With a lot of people, including several people to provide utilities, and within the last 20 years, this has been the process, what normally happens is somebody wants utilities to their property, they sign a consent to annex into town property. That's something that probably should have been done in the 70s, but people weren't thinking that in the same way. So, we have a lot of utility services out there that are not. There are quite a few people that have already signed, Hall Motor being one of them, to get the new utilities to their, so some of the bigger taxpayers out there have already signed consents in those sections. So, and that, consents are revocable, and it kind of sits there, and then when the town is able to get around to it, then we get it done. There's also the island annexation. People talk that if the area is completely surrounded by town property and no more than 25% of it is public right of ways, then we don't need consent. So, there's, there's quite a patchwork out there of depending on when the property was developed and everything else, but that is generally how it works. And for residential properties, that process takes three, approximately three years.
So, is, is there any percentage of this proposed property in that section of the annexation request of people who have not, in one fashion or another, agreed to?
Correct, and I'm not sure what that is, but yes, there's a percentage of it that have not.
So, as I said, you know, the, the two, the north one and the south one are real straightforward to me, and one in the middle is still a little bit... So, that's where I'm at.
No excuses, but our afternoon yesterday did get a little wild around the courthouse. I have not had a chance to get with the road official, the roadmaster, on the Roberta and S Street, those two there. The road official is very much aware of Catterman's Road, because we've worked on that for quite some time, so I'm comfortable going forward there. The other piece, the, the solar site there, this pie piece is interesting. It's sort of no-man's land, and then it's the whole site would be annexed in. So, just a little more clarification, that pie piece, is that the road? Or is it within the road, or just a piece?
No, it is not.
So, that's not taking any road? That's just taking in that piece of property into the, annexed into the...
Correct.
Okay.
As you see, it's just a long narrow piece that got there somehow, so one end is not even feasible for you.
The, the short place here, that it doesn't take that pie piece in?
That pie piece continues, continues to the east there. The reason that it's not shown is, when I directed to have them abs drawn, I said, just include the parcels that have not been annexed. So, that little chunk of the pie...
Is already...
Has already been annexed, but...
Because we have another piece like that over by the State Forestry that...
Yeah, it's a little hiatus there that wasn't included in that plan that the Oregon Valley might come in. So, it's been tax allotted to the county. The legislature probably didn't have any other, but...
So, and I, I must follow what Commissioner Shown sort of said in a way, but I have not talked to the road official, and I did not...
Dan Shown, as he lay us on, have you spoken to him?
No.
And he's usually in our work sessions, and I didn't call up yesterday afternoon.
I didn't either. I mean, it's just, as you said, it was crazy around here yesterday afternoon. But with that said...
What was crazy in the afternoon yesterday? I had business on Saturday. The two of you said it.
Yeah.
Yeah. He's very busy.
Don't want to share.
Not at this moment, no. If, if you're not aware, he will be, be aware very fast.
Yeah.
Yes.
Well...
The person that needs to, needs to talk to you must not go over to you this morning.
Yes, Darrell?
One, one thing, all of those roads in question have town utilities, water sewer, some type of utilities that we maintain.
Like S Street?
Yes, I guess. Roberta, Catterman's, they all do now. And another thing, once the people annex their water and sewer rates, they do go down. They don't pay the outside rates.
I can't tell you exactly what that difference is. It's usually a doubling or a tripling of the typical.
It's not even close to that.
It's, it's not a whole lot, but it is, it is something.
My thing, total between water and sewer, my guess is around 18.
Hazlewood, it's, it's a double or a triple. Okay. So, I, I don't know what the board is thinking relative to all three requests, or three areas to request, but once again, I'm comfortable enough right now for the, with the two, based on what I know.
I'll make a motion to accept annexation of Lakeview Solar Site annexation as presented. I think I can do it.
Been moved and segmented to accept the annexation proposal for the Lakeview Solar Site. Another discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Carreras?
I'll make a motion to accept annexation of Catterman's Road as presented by Darrell.
It's been moved and segmented to accept the Catterman's Road annexation request as presented. Another discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion Carreras?
On the other two, I'm not going to make a motion. I'll make a suggestion for us to bring that back after we have more time. Be able, be able to take a look at what our road official has to say. And I sort of, I, I'm concerned about the impact of creating an island and all the residents in there, which I'm one by business ownership. I don't know that they're aware of the impact that, that could mean to them. I don't know if the town's willing to, to accept or to look at maybe the people within there. It's not a forced annexation into the town as far as their personal locks and everything, it's a sign up, or what, what your options are, so that the impact to those residents in there isn't immediate, swift and fast. Within that area, we have from businesses to people that are on fixed incomes, I guess would be the politically correct way to say that. That can be quite an impact. So, with that said, maybe the town would look at how that annexation would happen for those residents and businesses that haven't signed an area revocable consent to annexation. The ones that signed that, it's, it's what it is, but it's gonna impact quite a few that have not signed that, so.
Just, just... Comes back to the education. Have you spoken to individual residents?
Not very many. There's a couple that want to come in, so, yeah.
Well, and that gives you the question that, that I asked Mr. Ed, and, you know, it'd be nice to know, just for the information, how many aren't aware that they'd be taken in and having signed it back.
We can do some research and send some letters and get some information back and come back at a later date, take that.
Will that work for you folks, okay?
That would.
Will that work for you folks, okay?
That's...
Yeah, okay. That's what we'll do then.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
One other comment. Town of Lakeview, thank you for working so diligently on Catterman's Road.
Yes.
And Red Rock, and accepting that into your system to help move that along. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
That's gonna, that's gonna benefit us all. Okay, we have our district attorney here and our office manager and our community corrections director. We're gonna call upon you folks, because we're really all busy, busy. Ask you to... Yes, please. Now, Jake, you have a fair number of agenda items. If you want to focus on the district attorney's office, that would be appropriate. Marla, did you want to pull the chair?
Good morning.
So, as we talked yesterday, House Bill, under House Bill 3078, the state legislature has allocated $7 million to supplemental funds, justice reinvestment. So, supplemental funds is a minimum of $7 million.
Jake, before you go, and I apologize for, because your voice, I know, you're having trouble, but if you can speak into that, so that...
So, under House Bill 3078, the state legislature allocated some funding, the $7 million to help enhance existing programs that have been created under our justice reinvestment, state board and justice reinvestment. So, here locally, we've taken our justice reinvestment monies and created our, our county enhanced supervision treatment court, which is also our drug court. With that, we utilize our justice reinvestment monies and put this on purpose of that program. The supplemental funding would come in to, to, to assist us in enhancing our program. And in conversations with this attorney, Horster, and Marla, we have decided to apply, to seek permission from the board to apply for that grant. And what we're requesting is enough to cover the hiring of a deputy district attorney. I shared that with the board yesterday, and they kind of, the question came up, what is the need? What's the need? And I couldn't answer that. And unfortunately, Ms. Horster was in trial, so she wasn't able to break away and come down the system without. So, we talked, and I will let Ms. Horster talk about the need, and I have some comments to add, as well as relating specifically to enhancing our treatment court. I had these premature conversations with the criminal justice commission to see if this should fit, and they, they agreed that it would fit, and it falls in the lines of enhancing, because they don't want to spend money on the supplemental funds to create a new program. They want to enhance existing programs by helping fund positions, positions specifically for enhancing. to enhance existing programs by helping fund positions, positions specifically for enhancing. So we feel, having the deputy district attorney that falls under the grant funds, solely grant funds, no general fund dollars whatsoever, we enhance our program.
So I think, I think what's important to understand is the benefit that this would have for our community. I think there's been, for many, many years, I think my predecessors have come before this board and have asked this board for funding for a deputy DA. This is not a new concept to you, in fact, we did it at the last budget request, and in fact, Judge Nichols was here also in trying to assist me in asking this board for funding for a deputy DA for a number of reasons. And it goes on, and now at the state level, they're looking at saying, okay, we're even willing to help you to do this. And for a number of reasons, in the justice reinvestment program, it, the deputy DA would come in and help in Jake's program in that in order for us to put people into this program, there's gonna require a lot of assessments that need to be done, that I quite frankly just do not have the time. I have taken this office to a new level, I was in trial yesterday, we have got, we're booking now trials into January. We are out until January, we are booking two and three deep, is what we're booked out into January. And for me to try to take on this again, this on top of everything else, we're doing the assessments that's gonna be necessary, the monitoring and everything else, I mean, it's not that we can't do it, but what's gonna happen is something else is gonna suffer. You just, there's only so many hours in the day, there's only so many hours in the day. Marla can't pick up this stuff, it can only be done by a lawyer. We talked about this before, that prior to me taking office, Marla was doing a lot of things that can only be done by a lawyer, those that come back into my seat. And we can't give this to somebody else in the office, only a lawyer can do this. Only a lawyer can go to drug court and sit in court. And that's something that this deputy DA can take on and can be a part of that process. And the state has recognized that. And the state's not gonna give that money away willy-nilly, they know that we're not gonna be able to do this without some help. And so I think that it is a blessing to our community and to our, to the citizens of our community that we're being able to have access to this money to help us to do this. Otherwise, I don't know that we're gonna be able to assist Jake in this program. I want to tell you that we've taken on the DHS stuff, we did do that before I came in office, that's a whole nother program that we've taken on, we have given funding for that, we've done it to help community partners and to help DHS in court every day. They call upon us and we have to stop everything and do that. We can't do all of this and be available to them, because his program is not gonna be a scheduled thing. He's gonna, we're gonna have people that are gonna get arrested, we're gonna wanna know if they're available. I've gotta have somebody that if I'm in trial, just like yesterday, you guys needed me in here, I can't get out of trial and stop and come here. I can't get out of trial and go and do, it takes two people, I can't be every minute at one time. I just can't do it with one person.
Just for the audience and my two colleagues, give a little synopsis of what the criminal reinvestment program is.
The justice reinvestment program was designed to help alleviate some of the prison overcrowding and alleviate the ability of the new prisons. Ideally, we're gonna be building more prisons in the state of Oregon, however, there were a lot of first, first time offenders who, when they weighed out, were they benefit from probation, were they benefit from going to prison, they were just going to prison. So there was monies available through the justice reinvestment grant to design programs to supervise that will allow community corrections to supervise downward departure cases. A downward departure case is someone that grids out based on the criminal history and the crime seriousness, they go to prison, but they can also, they would also benefit from probation, they could see probation. And if the probation just isn't working for them, and they want to continue down that path, eventually they go to prison. And we understand that, the state understands that, but they're asking counties to design programs to help offset some of those prison costs. And we have, and we've got an eighty percent success rate in our treatment court, which I can't tell you the number of folks we've kept who went to prison with long prison sentences and turned their lives around. And they've turned their lives around for successful business people in our community today, who otherwise would have gone to prison, got zero programming in prison, come back to our community, and we invite that battle while they're on parole. What that does, that ties up our seventy, but jail facility, because we're sanctioning people, the jail facilities are non-compliant, they're committing crimes, so we're trying to reduce recidivism while, while at the same time, reduce our prison population and trying to be successful.
We've been successful in creating our goal for years. This is a way to.
So now, what Jake is trying to say is, when it comes to me and I'm sitting there and I've got people that's committed a crime, and I have a grid, there's mandatory sentencing, up here is you go to prison, up here is your probation, right here in the middle, I have the option of saying, you're gonna go into prison, probation, but there's a fourth in the middle that's optional. And I get to choose whether you go here or you don't get it.
And I, I think Sharon, just to jump in there, just for the record, Jake, as he's explained this, and we've worked with him on it for years, and to your point, that's, sounds like we might be able to give another look at the middle ground, in part because of an assistant DA, an deputy DA, because he's been doing that in the past for a number of years now, we're very familiar with the program.
But that middle ground starts at my office.
Exactly. No, it's your call.
And if I don't have the time and I don't have the staff, that takes a whole lot of work in that middle ground.
Yeah, no, and he's.
The top one's easy for me.
He's explained that, I think, to us individually quite well. So yes, I understand that completely.
And we would never advocate, I would never advocate, if someone deserves to go to prison and needs to go to prison because of the risk to the community, I would never advocate otherwise, because community safety is number one. There's four goals of the justice reinvestment, community safety is one of those, reducing recidivism is another one of those, and I think our program has done a great job at that. Addressing substance abuse related issues, we're doing that. And it's holding offenders accountable, we are doing that. There's always things we can do better, ask community, eighty percent, I would like to see a hundred percent success, but we're gonna have those folks that are just wired not to succeed, that are wired to continue on the path that they want to go on. And some enhancements, historically prior to Sharon coming on and taking on office, we always, Marla was part of these staff, we always, one to two hours a week at times to sit down with U.S. Davidson and go over our probation case load. So when we sanction people, there wasn't, there wasn't a surprise factor, when the DA got the paperwork from us, if we sanctioned somebody, and the DA went aside, I don't want this person sent, I want this person in court. So we give someone a three day sanction, now we have to, now they go back to court, and the three day sanction does account. So it just enhances our cooperation, our communication, and it builds that trusting, working relationship. We, we're there, I think we're getting there, we're just not there yet, because we don't have, we don't have the time to sit down with the district attorney, Horster. And a lot of our, what's always been beat on me from day one is whether we sanction somebody, or we try and get them through the court process, it should be a short, sure and swift process, because number one ball is community safety. So we want to be sure about what we're doing, we want it to be swift, and we want it to be a short turnaround time. So we are holding people accountable, but also protecting the community at the same time.
So Jake, yesterday, and my fellow commissioners, I know a way in here, I don't think you got, and Marla was here, a sense that we weren't supportive of this, I think that you got the sense that we were, but there were some questions around, some of it's timing, well, before you go there, just, some of it's timing of when the grant applications due, some of it's timing when we hold our next board meeting, and some of it's about the job itself and some of the inner workings of that. So have the three of you had a chance to have those discussions? I know it's only been a short while since yesterday, so you perhaps haven't, but.
We did, we met this morning.
Okay.
Because Ms. Horster was in trial yesterday afternoon, or yesterday, so we were able to meet this morning, and I conveyed the question the board had, and some of the finer details. There's still some of those finer details that need to be worked out, but we've addressed most of them, such as, we're all agree, it's a zero general fund allocated for this position, zero. And we will, we will drop a document that assures us of that, imposes to that standard. So if this board isn't here in two years, for whatever reason, we still have this document that says no general funds. But then also how the position would be, where the funding would be located, that funding, I would be writing the grant in cooperation with Ms. Horster, so that funding would go into her budget. So, and I wouldn't be responsible for that for this. We had conversations this morning how that would look, who would that person report to and be responsible for. Ms. Horster being DA would have, would deputize that body, that person, so there would be a deputy district attorney working under her authority, understanding this county position. And that's where, if termination had to come up, Ms. Horster indicated she would make that recommendation, and the sleigh would push that forward, before the board, and with, business director Collins.
Human resources.
Yeah.
Go through HR, and then just like in the other.
Wait, sorry, I didn't bring up, I'm sorry, Jake. So we've worked out some of those details.
So I'm the one that asked the question on the need, you've shown the need, and it's no surprise to me, and I was the one to ask about the other things, the uniqueness about it. I think some of those uniqueness of the structure of it are yet to be fully figured out. Appreciate that you guys were able to talk about it and get some boilerplate things. I'll push this to have those questions answered, is the timeframe is there? As far as no general fund dollars, I support that. And if this goes away in three years, four years, or two years, whoever's sitting here as the board will make a decision at budget time, if the need is that strong and they want to fund it, they can. But I appreciate that it would be, if there's no general fund dollars and it goes away, and then that gives that board, whoever's here, the option to look at that and make a decision, if it's working that well, the board may make a decision to fund the position.
Sure.
But at least this puts it in writing of the intent at the time.
Sure.
So. And some of those finer details.
Yeah.
Commissioner, Mr. Collins would be brought into these conversations, so he could help help us identify those answers to those questions and get those finer details.
And one of the things for Marla and DA to look at is, is we've been very supportive on reorganization and the amount of employees up there and everything, and if an assistant DA comes in, what the workflows are, what's the need, it could be organizational changes that this impacts or anything. So there's a lot for that department to look at and everything, but we're here, meaning to make a decision, it's more to say, yes, go for it, but I want to just make sure that I brought some of my thoughts forward to that department, is, oh, opportunity, yes, yes, there's more opportunities, how do we look at our organization, how do we get the best bang for our dollar if this comes forward? And so that's where my questions come from. I've been involved in quite a bit of reorganization, so my mind sort of goes wild, and people know me, that's the way I am, but this is an opportunity, and so you guys have answered my question, and I'm comfortable with going forward with the grant.
Okay.
Especially with the interactions and the way that you guys brought forward. Thank you very much.
Appreciate that.
So, does anyone want to make a motion?
Before a motion, I'd just like to point out a couple of things, because as we talked yesterday, the timeline is coming on the twenty ninth, and then the, here, the next board session is the following week. So moving forward, should the board adopt, see, grant this approval to apply for this grant, for this position, I would, we would type that up, and I would bring it back before the board, for the board to actually view the documents and see that.
And as we discussed yesterday, Jake, that's appropriate, but you know, it's, we've had our struggles, I'll just say that, in the county, and we at some point in time have to trust each other, and that's what this is about.
I appreciate that. I appreciate that.
So I'll make a motion to, for Jake to apply for a grant that would add capacity of the assistant DA, and to go forward with that.
Okay. It's been moved and segmented for our community corrections director to apply for the state grant to add capacity to our district attorney's office moving forward. Any other discussion? Hearing that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you for taking the time.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jake, since we've got you here.
Can I leave?
Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, Jake, we're gonna just keep you up here.
Can you carry more comments for Lake County?
Start wherever you'd like. We had the Measure fifty seven conversation yesterday. Measure fifty seven, as I mentioned yesterday, is new to Lake County.
MRT.
It runs our MRT program.
What are yours?
Just give us a question of the MRT program. MRT is a moral rehabilitation therapy program that is presented and hosted and conducted by the Lake District Wellness Center. It's a cognitive-based substance abuse program that is used statewide. They, their therapists are trained in MRT, there's a specific MRT training that folks go to, they have three folks that are trained. This last winter, we put out an R for the MRT program, and that contract was awarded to the Lake District Wellness Center. So what's before you is the IGA between Lake County, Lake County Community Justice and the Department of Corrections to receive that funding for our continuing, these that are.
So, I'd like to move to accept the IGA between Lake County and the State Department of Corrections on the Measure fifty seven, Measure fifty seven. The financial impact is fifty thousand dollars.
I'll second motion.
It's been moved and segmented to accept Measure fifty seven's IGA between Lake County Community Justice and the Department of Corrections, with the dollar amount being fifty thousand per county. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
I've got one second to the chair.
The next piece before the board is the justice reinvestment ratification. The purpose of the ratification is the grant. Timeline is coming due, and there was a time based on not receiving all the information needed for the grant, to get the grant request, to get it before the board. So, a meeting with Commissioner Shams, he approved it, he submitted it, we're waiting to hear back on that, that being brought before the board. The total is a hundred and seventy-one thousand, four hundred and two dollars, ten percent of that goes toward nonprofit, it is assistant programs that we have here within the county, one being the Lake County Crisis Center, and the second being New Communities, Morgan Village in North Bay. So of the seventeen thousand, four hundred and two dollars, they would, they would split that, so they would receive about.
Eight thousand bucks.
About four thousand dollars, four thousand dollars a year for each program, and they decide how they did to spend their money in that request as well.
So the amount, that you're talking about seventeen thousand, one hundred and forty dollars and twenty cents?
Yes, one hundred and twenty.
Okay.
That would go towards our nonprofit assistance assistant program.
And the rest of it?
For the Lake County Enhanced Supervision Treatment Court Program. Um, towards our, um, Lake County, um, enhanced supervision court program.
This dovetail was pretty well with, I'll discuss in earlier, uh, book.
Yes, love.
Not so late. I'll move that we ratify the decision of Chairman Shown on the justice reinvestment grant.
Second motion.
Motion's been made and seconded to ratify the, uh, approval by myself as the chair for the justice reinvestment grant. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Um, also before the board, yesterday, um, I brought forward, we received a drug court grant from the State Criminal Justice Commission and the VIMAC grant. It allowed for us to hire a part-time, point-five FTE probation officer. Um, we're still waiting to hear back from a federal grant that we also applied for where we requested a point-four probation officer. Um, having said that, we have received word whether we received that grant or not, we're approving on. But I would like to move forward with hiring, uh, a drug court probation officer utilizing the halftime, using part of the funds that we were allocated for underneath the drug court grant. And then also utilizing my, my funding, my state grant data money that I received.
So Jake, and I should have asked this on the last grant that we just talked about too, we all sort of combined them together. Does the grant cover more than just wages? Does it cover any of the other, the need for a vehicle, the need for fuel, the need for per dime, the need for training?
It does cover, it does cover, um, training and there it is for being a cop, criminal cost involved in that. It doesn't include vehicle because I'm comfortable right now with three vehicles, um, in my department. We're able to share a vehicle at this time, I think, with, with, with the three probation officers. There's two cars available, but then my car is also available, so essentially we have three cars. Um, and we had cars that were down and out in the shop and we worked with the store state to utilize a pool car. Um, because we had folks for that everywhere. So I'm comfortable reporting that.
And just elaborate a little bit, there's, um, other things impacted, whether it's IT. Uh, financial impact to your department will be administrative fees, it was the general fund by, based on the formula. More people, more use, more dollars.
I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable moving forward, the grant does cover a lot of those things. Um, and the grant does cover a lot of those things.
I just encourage you to work with our budget officer to get those numbers together. So it's no surprise to you whenever our next budget here comes.
I have done that and I will continue to do that. So I'm seeking approval from the board to move forward with hiring of that position. Um, and if there's going to be language within the, uh, within the job announcement and this grant under position, if the grant go away and we're not able to make it work within our existing budget, that position goes away. So again, there'll be zero liability to the county, zero liability.
You're starting to read me like a book, Jake.
I, I heard.
Don't tell me it's a bad book, please don't.
I, I heard, I heard, uh, Treasury Department, I suggested that, um, I, I, I appreciate that. So I want to, I can emphasize that.
I'm glad that, I'm glad that resonated, not just with you, but I hope it resonates with everyone.
Everybody that manages a budget.
Yes.
Should take quite note. Um, so I'll make a motion to take advantage of the grant award that will add a PO position in our community justice department with the verbiage on the announcement and everything that the director has offered.
Thank you. And I believe the only other thing that was brought forward.
We don't give a second.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Sorry.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the position request from our community corrections director for the grant opportunity for a PO, um, PO position in his department, Earl Watson. Uh, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Appreciate that, thank you. Yeah. The last thing I believe I brought forward, um, was the.
Five thousand.
The five thousand, that's correct. The five thousand, um, that I would work with, um, Detective Officer Treasury Department. But remove five thousand dollars, I would continue to see allocated towards workforce development.
Commissioner Kestner wasn't here when he presented this yesterday, so he may have a question or two.
Worth it, his, um, the last board session, um, Commissioner Shown brought forward, um, the board commissioners allocated five thousand dollars to community development, I believe.
Economic development.
Economic development.
Video.
To assist in creating the workforce development position here in Lake County. Um, and I, that position will do, has done historically, and was through, like, through COIC, has been wanted for our adult clients as well as community members. Um, so I'm, I'm interested in allocating five thousand dollars towards that cause as well. So as long as we get that position from a halftime, the seventy-five percent back.
Yep.
Uh, halftime won't, won't do anybody justice. And there's a meeting coming up next, next week, that will be adjusting that.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
I'll make a motion that, uh, through community justice, uh, we grant five thousand dollars. Jake, you said that's coming from your contingency line item? Is that correct? I'll, from whatever line item Jake said, contingent upon the position being, uh, three-quarter percent, employed at a three-quarter time minimum, if not, the funding that's before.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, it's been moved and seconded that, uh, Jake Greer, community corrections director, uh, is going to contribute five thousand dollars out of his budget in the appropriate place towards the workforce, uh, investment, uh, program here in Lake County, working with Plymouth Community College, the service provider. And it's stated that this will be to enhance the, the current halftime position into a minimum of three-quarters time. And if it does, if it's not able to, as we said, with our video lottery dollars, then we won't be, uh, providing those contributions. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion carries.
And then the last thing I brought up yesterday, um, was my access to my Disney cameras. I don't know if we would do, if I need to talk about that again today.
Let's go. We have a policy in place, but it's on the agenda to revisit that policy.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, 'cause I did bring that, it was on my list, so I didn't know if I had to revisit that.
It's an addition for today on the policy.
Commissioner Kestner has my light on. I, I, no, I work with you on those issues. I, my busy schedule, we just scheduled something, I thought yesterday would be an appropriate time. So my apologies if I.
Oh, I see. I've covered so many things, like next week, I've gone pretty much all week. So, catch me when you can.
So my apologies for catching up early.
No problem. Understand. And as far as latest on, dovetail with anybody. That's impressive.
Appreciate that.
Thanks, Jake.
Thank you.
David.
David.
My other brother, he always colleagues the ground before you do.
David's always about me.
It is.
Uh, yesterday I brought forward the COVID situation with the BLM and Surprise Valley. Under my surprise, I did some phone calling on, uh, the, our lease. Well, Lake County was never out of their lease, so our lease goes until two thousand thirty-four with BLM for that property. The one that was out of the lease was the Surprise Valley. Surprise Valley brought to their attention, well, it's not being used, so why should we continue supplying utility to that building when it's not even being used? And why should we renew our permit? So that's how this all come about and I got with the right proper channels as I was talking with Renee Wall. Yeah. And so what she, she's gonna do is, all she wanted to know is what, what are we gonna do to make that, to obtain the building we have there? And I said, well, we're gonna clean it up, put a door on it, make it secure or usable. She goes, good enough, now I will call Surprise Valley and renew their permit, which they're, they're willing to do because they gotta supply service to us for our, our building.
Are they actually going to connect live wire to the building?
Yes, yes, that's, that's on Surprise Valley to give us, uh, the service. It's all on them and so in the months of this, we were, it was kind of confusing because we thought we weren't in the lease. We were, we weren't obtaining the building. It does say in the lease, as long as we have it, we gotta maintain the building. Well, no one's maintained it, however, on, have two thousand seven, however long it's been.
And the pack rats have been doing a good job.
Yes, well, that's what she said, she goes, there's pack rats carrying shotgun shells in there and we, we should kind of laugh when she said that, so.
Was it? We're somewhat in breach of, of the agreement by not utilizing the.
Right, maintain, we don't have to utilize it, we don't have to be using it far as, uh, we don't, as long as we maintain the building, we can make it very empty for a warming cabin when I'm out there coyoting. So, yeah.
I'd be chucking.
Electricity, so.
Right, I'd live there, which I might have to.
Yeah, because you can't afford to raise your now, you're gonna have to cut, cut your costs, your overhead costs.
Anyway, I'll sit, I'll go inside.
Yeah.
That's what I can't do, you know, I mean, you got the proper channel. When I stopped with Todd Forbes, he just, he, he just kind of middle of that, he was just doing his diligence, what he was supposed to, so he sent me the letter.
So you will have to re-upload yourself before your career ends.
Two thousand. I hope I'm dead by the time I'm gone. That's the long time.
It's been seventeen years.
Oh, yeah. That one, that one. Okay, yeah, but I still would be gone.
So no action to take, the action is under you, you're already addressing the hidden, intended condition. So we have no action.
Yes, yeah, to maintain.
I'm gonna, I'll give you a quick rundown, I'm gonna take my guys, we're gonna go out there, we're gonna take pain measures and see what we need for our materials and I'll have them after, within three weeks, give them for useable.
Yeah, do like a percentage of the procedures. Condition. Yep, I think, I think we're good. Thanks, David. So, we have several other, I have, uh, Denise, why don't we go ahead and start with you?
Okay. So the Veterans Transportation Grant, this is a yearly grant, um, through our Veterans Service Department. I do manage it as the transportation manager. Um, it's for forty-five thousand for the upcoming year for transportation of our veterans.
And that's a yearly, I mean, one year forty-five thousand, not a, not a bagging.
No.
And the money comes from the Department of, the State Department of Veterans Affairs, so it's not charged.
Correct.
This is the first time I've seen this for, uh, Verbeach, highly rural areas. Does that go with our?
Frontier Outback?
Well. Yeah, we were pioneers.
We're almost there, that five thousand each, or highly rural, are we highly rural because of?
Well, Jake, you know, live, I'm sure you do, but Lakeview says it's the tallest town in Oregon.
I'm not sure I do.
There's roughly about five, when a community incorporates, most of them say incorporate as a city, is about five communities who incorporated as a town. We don't have its elevation town.
Yeah, not city, but.
Little tidbit, I got over.
So we digress a little bit, do you want the motion?
Yes, please. Yes, please.
Yeah, go for it.
I'd make a motion that we accept the two thousand seventeen eighteen Transportation of Veterans in Highly Rural Areas Grant Agreement between them and Lake County and the State and Lake County.
Sorry. It's been moved and seconded to approve the two thousand eighteen seventeen eighteen Veterans Transportation Grant Agreement around forty-five thousand between Lake County and the state of Oregon. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. So Denise.
Muffet from.
Okay. Community Development Loan Extension Request is in. I don't believe she needed to come back in to.
I don't need her to come back in.
I don't think.
Let me get to it. This is asking for an extension, um, uh, for August through November of two thousand seventeen with payments resumed, presuming in December two thousand seventeen and for them to be added on at the end of the contractual agreement with the county. So I will move to accept this loan extension between Lake County and Double Eagle Mining Company as presented.
Sorry. It's been moved and seconded to accept the, uh, Community Development Loan Extension Request between Lake County and Double Eagle Mining as presented. Any other discussion?
For the audience, Jimmy, are you familiar with this?
A little bit. Basically, out after the, uh, Sunstone area, one of the company has a loan from us and this year has been, and not, their business, their customers have not been obtained as much out there for federal, some non-business, six grounds or whatever. So they're asking to consider racing to extend their, their loan and pay up. And also just downfall of their business.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Uh, Commissioner Waters, did you want Darwin here on the road vacation, order of vacation?
I, I do not, I don't know if you guys do, as long as legal counsel, which you said had reviewed it. And this is, uh, yeah, yes, it is totally landlocked, there's not access to BLM or publicly at hand. I'm comfortable.
Okay. Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the road vacation as presented here. Did you get a feedback from the roadmaster?
On, on this, I went, Darwin had mentioned that he had worked with the road, roadmaster on this. And, you know, I did not follow up other than Darwin.
Just saw no problems.
So was, you made a motion, you better have a second, I'll second. I'm not hearing you, well.
It's been made, a motion's been made and seconded to approve the road vacation order of vacation as presented. Uh, this landlocked piece of property, uh, property surrounding this road is owned by the same entity. Any other discussion?
Only that it doesn't affect public access to any other parts other than the own private property.
Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. So Commissioner Kestner, did you want Dave Molls to come in on the solar pilot agreement?
I think he, no, he's, as he mentioned yesterday, he's swamped with, uh, this upcoming tax.
Yep.
I think he presented it pretty well. Do you guys have any questions on it?
No, he, he hadn't met with us individually even before, so it's all straightforward to me.
And for the audience on the camera, this is a year ago, they literally passed a option for people to pay their tax on solar. And this comes out to seven thousand per megawatt, as opposed to having to go through the central department of revenue. That is some, somewhat inconsistent. And it's just cleaning up the agreement between the county and the owner or brokers of the solar to get the paperwork done to permit the seven thousand dollars per megawatt payment, the taxes.
Well, and I think just for the record, we need to add that another main part of this agreement, this modified, updated agreement was, there was issues with how these agreements. this agreement, this modified, updated agreement was, there was issues with how these agreements, because these utilities sell them fairly frequently, and the whole transferring process was as part of this new form that we presented to us. So I'll make a motion that we approve the new pilot agreement as...
amended agreement.
Amended agreement as presented.
Sorry?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the new amended pilot agreement as presented. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We do have meeting minutes to... Denise, can you give us those dates?
Yeah. Uh, September 5th and September 6th.
September 5th and 6th minutes are the ones I don't have in front of me. I normally do, but they're on my desk. I'll move to approve September 5th and 6th minutes as presented.
Been moved and seconded to approve the meeting minutes from September 5th and 6th as presented. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And if I'm not mistaken, the last item...
Security cameras.
Yep, we have a security cameras discussion, possible action.
So yesterday, Commissioner Kestner, you weren't at the end of the meeting, I, during the meeting, I jotted down amendment that I wanted to add into our, to amend our security camera policy. After that, I gave direction to Denise to put that, my verbiage into that, to work that. Run it by legal counsel, work on this. Actually, Dave ran by it, she got it out to each one of us at my direction to put my words in it. So we have that before us today. I'm comfortable with moving forward on it, but I'd like to hear from each commissioner.
I'm not sure if I've received...
I emailed it to you.
Okay. I haven't seen it yet. But have we had the, the general official that's in charge of the camera system input on it?
Mr. Sheriff Hallbrooke is, I don't know if he's on vacation, but he's off.
No, he'll be back tomorrow.
He'll be back tomorrow.
He's at a conference.
I do not know if he has been, if he's, did he receive it, Sheriff?
I do not for it at all.
You haven't for it to be a sheriff or the town?
No, it's a commissioner policy.
Is your, just want to hold off, is that probably...
We need to have their input because they manage the system, and it's a security system with sheriff partners. It's responsible.
They're responsible to administer the board commissioner's policy, as you pointed out in your email, that's what they're responsible for. It's not gonna hurt to have them look at it.
Yeah, they're responsible, they're responsible for security. They're not responsible for a security camera system, which there is a committee, which we've missed one of the committee people to get it out to. So, but the security camera system is ours, not for Sheriff's. They're responsible for security.
For security and for all side of it. But it'll be to do courtesy.
Absolutely. I agree with you 100%.
Okay. Is there anything else that needs to come before us?
Do you need the one sore thing back? I don't see that.
No, it's right here. Still need that back. If there isn't anything else that needs, you need to sign it.
I probably do.
Okay, so...
Oh, this is a different one.
Yeah. If there is anything else that needs to come before us today, then we will adjourn our regular session, meeting of September 20, 2017, at about 11:16.